Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded November 9, 2021.
It's five o'clock. I'll call the Portage County Board Public Hearing. Public Hearing on the final supervisory district plan to order. Anybody from the public wish to speak on the redistricting? State your name, please.
Mark Christensen.
Mark Christensen. Anybody else? Then I can just let Mark talk. Uh, Mark, uh, there'll be a three limi- a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Uh, in-person or remote comments are subject to reasonable control of the committee chair. So if you'd like to speak, go ahead, step up to the mic and...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Christensen, um, the District 1 Alder here in Stevens Point. Um, I was recently appointed about five, six weeks ago, so just wanted to introduce myself quickly. I did want to speak, uh, quickly about the redistricting and I did want to give you a heads-up and it's only my own personal thing. I am, I do have some concerns and I have met with the city clerk. I've met with the mayor. Um, we do have our meeting tomorrow evening to, uh, whether or not to approve. And my biggest concern is in our districts, we have quite a bit of variability. We have, out of our 11 districts, nine out of 11 have a difference of over 100 voters from the targeted population. Our target is 2,233. So 82% of our districts have a difference of over 100. Your redistricting plan, I think 82% of your districts have a difference of less than 100. So 82 and 18 are kind of the key numbers to, to remember. But 82% of yours are within a difference of less than 100, 82% of ours are over. So I, I, it can only speak for myself personally. I do have some concerns. But I didn't want you to get blindsided. I didn't want, the first that you heard that there were concerns. And everybody's through no fault of their own, kind of under the gun because we received the census data so late and I understand that. And it does make it very difficult. But I did want to let you know that I will be sharing those concerns tomorrow evening. And nothing may come of it. I'm only speaking for myself personally as a, as a citizen and I don't know where it'll go, but I did want to share that with you. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity.
Sir, Mark, Mark, so for what we're approving is for the county board supervisors and what you're approving are for the city.
So do you... It's, it's different, but the problem is you can't overlap our, you can't split any of our wards. So if our districting plan changes, then it may be required for you to, to make some adjustments. There may have to be some collaboration between the two in order to make sure that you don't cross a ward. So...
Okay. Je- Jeff Hartman, can you, can you speak to this a little bit as well? Thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Cause I, I was under, yeah, come on up, come on way up in the front here. So you're in front of everybody if you could. We want to see you. We're gonna put you in the hot seat. That's fine, yeah, just... Yeah, if you could, just so the people at home can hear you as well. But we had, we had had our redistricting and we had talked about, uh, the issue that the city was having. And as, as I believe it, that it was resolved or whatever, we had come to an understanding and so...
Yes. Well, we came to an understanding. We came to a, we, they had a plan that, uh...
Yep, speaking to the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. We came up with a plan, well Stevens Point came up with a plan that Carrie Yenter was comfortable with and brought it to her committee. I don't know exactly what course it took in Stevens Point. But we did collaborate at that time, right? So that's what I know. Uh, and you're right, wards can't, wards can't be split by supervisory districts. But I'm not gonna step too far into legal issues here, but, um, the municipalities have, are required to get, make a good faith effort to make them work. What that exactly means is I, I have no idea. But, um, we would probably have to, if you don't approve yours tomorrow, I don't know what that means for us.
Go ahead, Mark.
I just did want to compliment Jeff on the work he did. I did have a chance to review some of the things that, and I think your average deviation was only like 1.99% or something, which is pretty impressive. So I, I just wanted to put in a plug. I was, I was impressed by the, your ability to, to be able to create that consistent of a district.
And it is quite an undertaking and I don't know if I've explained it enough to the rest of the folks. And, uh, if you've talked to Jeff about some of the stuff, it is, it is a massive undertaking with the short timeline. Uh, and there are many, many things that keep coming up to try and make sure that we comply with.
And just, just so you know too, I haven't, I, in order to, I don't believe in blindsiding anybody. That's, so I have also had discussions with the city clerk, with Carrie and with the, the mayor. So they're, they're aware of my concerns as well. And as, as I mentioned, it might not go anywhere, but just so, I, I didn't want all of a sudden, you know, have you walking away from here and being 100% certain that your job is done because there is a slight chance that it might not be.
So Jeff, the deviation, what is allowable within, within the law? Is it...
Oh, well, that, what the guidance is, is 10% and less is assumed to be constitutional. Our current plan is a little different from what we talked about in September. We're up to 9.24 after a couple of changes we made to accommodate Stevens Point. So we're still sitting fine here, uh, depending on what happens tomorrow, I guess.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Do we know what the deviation would have been if we went with the plan that Stevens Point presented?
I don't think, well, I never actually made those changes and they never really present. Oh, the one they presented at their last council meeting?
Yes.
Is, yes, it's 9.24.
No, it was one, it was prior to that, not the compromise one.
Oh, before that, it was 6.96 or something, a little bit under seven. So we went up about 2%.
Kayla.
I think when the city proposed, uh, that the county amend our plan, the deviation went up to like 33%.
Right. Um, I, I would consider that kind of a transitory work product, but yes.
I understand, it's a work product, but it was the first shot.
Yes.
When we were already at 6.0.
Right.
And change. Thank you.
Yes. That's what we were getting at, Jeff.
Oh, sorry. It wasn't something I presented here, so like...
We got there.
Out it goes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jeff.
Do I need a motion to close the hearing?
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing for the redistricting. Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Du Beck. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. I will call the Portage County Board to order. Roll call.
We have 22 supervisors attending in person. We have, um, one attending remotely, Supervisor Hahnle. We have two excused supervisors, Mua and Johnson. So we have a total of, uh, 22 present and one vacant.
Pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisors Astro.
As we near the end of 2021, look at the divisive personal and political climate we exist in. It's a sad state of affairs when we have to, elected officials and their families being intimidated and threatened. You need to speak the truth and don't accentuate the negative. A better job of educating and disseminating information must take place. Stop utilizing untruths and propaganda. Social media has no filters or fact checks. Do your due diligence and garner the facts before spreading falsehoods. Is this really how you want to raise your children? Is this the climate you want your grandchildren to inherit? This is about all of us, not one person or one group, all of us. History will show that if we do not rectify this tyranny, we will have missed the opportunity to live and work together. With that, Thanksgiving is on our doorstep. Take a minute to think about what is important to all of us. Be thankful. We have family, friends, and our health.
Yep. Review and approval of September 21st, 2021, public hearing minutes. I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Robbie. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of November 2nd, 2021 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Reese, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. All those, discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence.
County Clerk fill-in ballot access reminder and notification of non-candidacy deadline. Um, I just wanted to point out on the non-candidacy deadline, if there is any supervisor that is not intending to run for reelection, um, if you could please file your notification of non-candidacy before Christmas Eve. Um, I would appreciate that because I'm required to be here to accept that if you do come in Christmas Eve. Um, so, uh, please do that ahead of time. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Public notice. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time. With such comments, subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Anybody from the public wish to speak tonight? Okay. Uh, resolutions and ordinances. Number five, adoption of the 2021 final supervisory district plan.
Resolution number 170 2020-2022, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee, acting as the redistricting committee. This resolution adopts the final supervisory district plan.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Moresse. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Number s- number six, authorization for a contract between Portage County and the Board of Regents of Wis- University of Wisconsin System for January 1st, 2020-2022 through December 31st, 2022.
Resolution number 171 2020-2022, submitted by the Agriculture and Extension Education Committee. This resolution authorizes a contract between Portage County and the UW system for extension programs for 2022.
Motion by Supervisor Reese, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppo- opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, authorizing a 2021 budget adjustment for solid waste department due to an increased transfer facility volume.
Resolution number 172 2020-2022, submitted by the Solid Waste Management Board and Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes a budget adjustment for the solid waste department. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Moresse, seconded by Supervisor Madine. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Authorizing a 2021 budget adjustment for solid waste department due to increased swap volume.
Resolution number 173 2020-2022, submitted by the Solid Waste Management Board and Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes a budget adjustment for the solid waste department and requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Moresse. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. You folks are doing so much better tonight with the raising of the hands. I just want to let you know.
Maybe you're doing a better job.
You're doing a lot better tonight. It's not all on Larry, so... Number nine, Portage County Wellhead Protection Ordinance Amendment.
Resolution number 174 2020-2022, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution amends the wellhead protection ordinance.
Motion by Supervisor Moore, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
But also Mr. Chair.
Discussion.
We, we need an amendment to this?
All right, Nick, you, you, go ahead.
When I originally, uh, moved on this at the committee level, I moved on it with the idea that an animal confinement unit was 1,000 animal units, which is 700 dairy cows. Now, I do realize that that is a little exceptional, but as written, this would effectively put some of our businesses, existing business, if they had a catastrophic fire or something, out of business. Uh, and I would, I would like to amend this, uh, especially in a spirit of compromise, to 500 animal units. Uh, and then those existing farms, uh, could stay in business if they had, uh, a catastrophic fire that may ruin some of their facilities.
So you're asking to, uh, reduce the number of cattle?
Increase the number of cattle from 100 animal units to 500 animal units. And I guess that, that being said, we all need to realize that 100 animal units isn't 100 cows. I think dairy cow is, is, would be 70. So if you take a, a 60 or 70 cow herd, uh, which there are several, or a few, I should say, that fall into that, um, by the time they add calves, heifers, uh, steer and a bull, we would far exceed that. And I, again, I, I do understand that that 1,000 cow units is a little exceptional, uh, for a B, but I would like to amend that to 500.
So you're taking the 100 to 500? Is everybody finding that at 7.2, uh, 2.3? Is that correct, Barry?
Uh, yes. Page one.
Page one.
Definitions. I think it actually, it's the first definition.
You're taking it from 100 to 500?
I don't believe that, and if I may, Mr. Chair. When we voted at this on the committee level, I don't believe a single committee member voted in favor of, uh, elimi- eliminating some, some businesses. So like I say, in the spirit of compromise, I would like to raise that to 500.
Is that a second Supervisor Sike? So we've got a, uh, an amendment to raise the number of animal units in total from 100 to 500. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the amendment. Supervisor Splinter.
Um, yeah, I was, I was on, on the committee also and I don't recall talking about a number. We were referring primarily to CAFOs, which are usually in the area of 500 animals or more. Uh, having 100 animals without a definition, you could have 90 chickens and 10 cows and you're, you're, you're under this, uh, limitation. So I would, uh, strongly support the amendment so that we know what we're talking about and moving forward.
Supervisor Moresse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of find this highly problematic that we're editing this at the 11th hour. The committee, with all due respect, should have had those details all in line and in a row. 100, 100 animals to 1,000 or, you know, 500 is, is quite a big difference, especially in an area that's sensitive for wellhead protection. Everybody that I spoke to today, staff, um, city staff, um, water specialists, is okay with this 100-unit number. But changing it to 500 right now is, is unacceptable to the majority of the people in Stevens Point because we want clean water and whiting and pullover. So if, if, if we could have more explanation on how this got omitted or maybe the reasoning behind it, um, it, it would be really helpful. Thank you.
Supervisor Neville, did you have your hand up as well?
Yes, I did. Um, I was in the meeting when this was discussed and I'm talking to that. I was in the meeting when this was discussed and, um, it seems to me it needed to be discussed in committee before any change is made because I didn't hear anything come up about this. And, um, I'm not in favor of raising it at this point. Thank you.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, I would like to know where the 100 animal definition came from. Because I talked to a majority of the committee members, and I, I apologize, Julie, I didn't speak with you. And none of them changed, remembered a motion to change the definition. Um, I have the printout from the agenda for that evening, from the packet for the Planning and Zoning Committee. And it says, "Animal confinement facilities." And the definition that was presented to the committee, which should have been the definition that was presented to us if there was not a motion to change it, says, "locations of confinement of livestock at a density exceeding 3 animal units per acre." That is right directly from the ordinance that was presented to the committee on October 26th. So I want to know where the 100 number came from because it seems in here, nobody from the committee knows. So can, we have some staff here. Is Chris Holman available? Where, where did that come from? And then I'd like a follow-up question.
Can anybody help me? Do we have anybody that knows? Does any, Dan?
So the, uh, the 100 animal units was a, an addition that was mentioned in the email to the Planning and Zoning Committee that was given to the Planning and Zoning Committee at their last meeting. Um, when they discussed this particular topic, we assumed that this was included and ran that by the committee chair. Uh, and the committee chair did bless this particular ordinance amendment.
Who's the committee chair? You had a follow-up?
I would like to ask the committee chair if he blessed that. Uh, I never gave that, the committee never gave that blessing, so I don't understand where this would come from. I don't solely act as the committee.
Thank you. So now we have a little issue because we have staff writing policy.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do because they changed what was presented to the committee. They arbitrarily changed what was presented to the committee. So, an example, I'm gonna use a farm. Kurt Gerholsky, Diamond D. Jerry, Diamond G. Dairy. Rainbow Drive, 9th Street area, so everybody knows where that is, Town Hall. Called me on this and he said, "Where does 100 animal units come from?" He said, "Because if something happens tomorrow, I'm out of business." Kurt doesn't operate a CAFO. He milks 60 cows. Him and his wife. Two kids that want to take over the farm. Yeah, they're young. They may learn. They'll probably find better jobs. But if his barn burns down, tornado goes through, he's out of business. Kurt wants to improve the environment. He wants to put up a nur- pit. He can't because it's an exemption. This has serious impact on families out there. Somebody is arbitrarily writing policy that wasn't approved by the committee.
We have an Supervisor, uh, Morrow.
You know, if I think back, it's so hard to think because we've talked about this for so long. But I think he's right. At the last meeting, we had the amendments and then Supervisor Ja- Barry Jakowski conceded several points and we all reached a consensus. And I think that really the only thing that we did was we removed Phelps Farm out of that B district. But we never had a discussion on a number of animals. Maybe we should just, if I would make a motion to take it back to committee, could we drop your motion and could we go back and revisit it? Because we never voted. It's on like the back page of this. We never talked about a number.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, I would, I certainly feel somewhat the same that Julie does, that Supervisor Morrow does. The situation is, uh, the town of, uh, the village of Amherst, in the village of Junction City, Stevens Point, we as a committee have talked about this for two and a half years now. There are people that are anxious and I, again, I say in the, in, in the spirit of compromise, 500 isn't a terrible number. There isn't a lot of people going to go into dairy farming. It will protect someone who would like to have, uh, maybe some turkeys or chickens, uh, because those animal units add up in a hurry as well. I know the committee is, is diligently worked on this. And I, I don't think, again, I don't, personally don't believe that probably the, the 1,000 units that we use for a CAFO, which is 700 dairy animals. So in, again, in the spirit of compromise, I thought 500. If we can't amend this on the floor this evening, I would just go along with Julie and say we need to go back to committee and discuss this. Now, I, I personally know that the committee has, has done its due diligence other than missing this 11th hour change in definition. But I do believe that this could move forward, again, in the spirit of compromise. I don't think it's asking too much and I don't think a single member of that committee, again, reiterating, voted to eliminate someone's small family farm. And that's exactly what we're doing here by this. I, I, again, I know the, the committee has, has worked diligently on this. We've come to compromises on things. I think, I think the committee feels strongly about where it is other than this definition being missed. And I, I, I as well feel that there has been some, some manipulation of definitions that the committee was not made aware of. And, and again, I, I can't relinquish all blame because maybe we should have caught it. But again, in the spirit of compromise, I think this can move forward at 500. And I, I thank everybody for their concern. We all have the same concern. But I, I can't, I can't in good conscience vote to eliminate somebody's small family farm.
So as I look at this, something that was stricken in there from before, was it the number 590?
That's the, that's the, um...
Referring to an empty management plan.
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Bob Gifford.
Yeah, I would be comfortable seeing this go back to committee for discussion and I'll tell you why. In the past, uh, a couple of years ago, I was at the Counties Association meeting, going to all the workshops I could go to about agriculture, you know, and, um, there was a fellow there, I think it was from Farm Service Agency, talking about the economic crisis that our farms are in. The loss of 700, uh, farms per year for over the last three years at the times probably continued. And, you know, we're, we're at a point where, you know, as, as Barry mentioned, that some of these people, you know, milking 60 or 70 cows or, or even 120 are probably living on the edge of survival. And if they lose their day job off the farm, which is also something I learned, that about 85% of farm income comes from off-the-farm labor. Um, I, I think that, I think this merits more study than just having someone arbitrarily assign a number of, of, of animal units. There may well be a confined animal operator who runs, uh, you know, an ecologically optimal way of, uh, taking care of that big amount of manure that comes out uh, without it polluting the groundwater. You know, so I would be happy to see this go back to committee and maybe invite, and the committee invite, uh, Farmers Union in or the Farm Service Agency and really enlighten everybody, including us on the board floor here as to what, you know, how can, how can we retain the farms that we have and improve them, uh, with respect to... how can, how can we retain the farms that we have and improve them with respect to environmental health? I guess that's my point.
So, I guess, so everybody understands that because this has been going on as long as it has, we've got Junction City and Amherst that does not have any wellhead protection. So I would not encourage anybody sending this back. I would encourage us to find an answer tonight, and to continue to move this forward. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the body. And I think our chair has made a good point. I think I pretty much know the personalities of the people who sit alongside me on the Planning and Zoning Committee. I don't think any one of us, even if it's sent back to committee, is going to vote to eliminate people who have worked long and hard to build a family operation. So if we settle on five hundred, or if we settle on seven hundred, or if we settle on four hundred, I think five hundred was a good compromise. And I think our chair, our board chair made a good point, and I can't speak for every, each and every one of the individuals that sit on that committee, but I do think I know their personalities. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna come back with somewheres close to that same number, because again, I don't think any one of them in good conscience will vote to eliminate a situation. We all know, you know, that five hundred animal units is less than five hundred dairy cows, it's less than five hundred beef cows. But in order for them to have any expansion at all, if you, if you, let's use a hundred dairy cows for, for an example, there has to be young stock, there has to be support stock, they maybe keep a few steers for some added income. And in order for this to move forward, we're gonna settle somewheres, as a committee, I do believe we're gonna settle somewheres around that five hundred, or maybe go up on it with more, with more clarity. I thought in the spirit of compromise, to move this forward, five hundred was a number that we could all live with. And I caution each and every one of us to, I speak with Mike Juris on the situation, I think the representative from Amherst can understand that they are looking to have wellhead protection. I think Peter Malik, we spoke with him in the past, is looking to have wellhead protection. And I do believe the five hundred number is a good compromise for a definition. We're not talking about changing the ordinance itself, we're talking about a definition. So...
Supervisor Rakowski.
Thank you, everybody.
I would just like to echo the chair's thought, and Supervisor Barry Jakowski, I'd like to see this get done for the village of Junction City, who's in my district, and Amherst. I think we gotta figure out a compromise tonight, so we can move this forward. And I agree with Barry, I would support the amendment this evening.
Supervisor Robbie.
I'd like to see us complete this tonight as well. I'm kind of ignorant of farms compared to our farmers in the body. I'm just wondering, is there anyone who is more of authority who can say five hundred's a bad number? Because I don't know whether a hundred is a good number, I don't know if five hundred's a good number. Is there anyone who could tell me that we shouldn't go five hundred because of the following reasons? I just want...
What's the definition of a CAFO? Is that seven hundred, or?
Thousand.
Thousand.
Thousand animal units, but, oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may.
We're talking five hundred animal units.
Right, and I, I'm, right, and I just want them to understand that a large, large farm is considered a CAFO, and that's a thousand, and that falls under a whole different category.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, a CAFO at a thousand animal units is seven hundred fully grown milking dairy cows. Easy to do the math, five hundred, you go to three fifty dairy cows.
I don't know if that helps Supervisor Robbie at all. Dan?
Thanks, I just wanted to read my email to Larry regarding the amendment that came here, it might just help shed some light on, on the reasons. Said, "Hi Larry, I'm attaching the draft amendments to the wellhead ordinance and the committee made based on addressing the following points highlighted in the motion." And there were, it was A, B, C, and D. And so, B was switching similar use determinations from the zoning administrator to the Planning and Zoning Committee. I said the references to Planning and Zoning Committee were restored to zoning administrator. C, waiving of BOA fees for special exceptions in groundwater protection districts. This amendment was deleted. D, switching animal confinement facilities from prohibited to special exception use in District B. I said animal confinement facilities were switched back to prohibited in the B District. As part of item D, I wanted to make special note of the change I made to the definition of animal confinement facility. I added the highlighted section below to the definition, as this was part of the recommendation in the Jeff Schuler email that was referenced for fixing the issue related to animal confinement facility. I think it helps narrow the focus of animal confinement facilities to larger operations, and not unintentionally include small farm operations on small acreage. But if you are not comfortable that this was the intention of the committee, I will remove it. Animal confinement facilities, locations of confinement facilities, excuse me, and then I included the definition, animal confinement facilities, which means locations of animal confinement of livestock at a density exceeding three animal units per acre, and the highlighted section is "and" more than one hundred animal units in total. I said the wellhead maps remain unchanged from the last county board meeting. Please let me know if this is acceptable.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Splinter.
As I totally recall, we tried to reverse A, B, and C on that one number, basically trying to get rid of any objections, so we can put this wellhead protection into effect. When we got to the animal confinements, it was, it was, say, a list of, overlay District B Section 7254 has been revised to add animal confinement facilities to the list of possible exceptions. Animal confinement facilities was removed and reverted back to its original location in Section 72.55, prohibited uses. That's where I recall our motion ending. We did not add the definition of animal confinement facilities to be a hundred units in total. I don't recall that at all, and it seems like it's, it's being policy made by staff at that point. And, I mean, because I got out of the meeting figuring, okay, good, we got the, the CAFO is covered, and everything else is good, so we should run right through this, and we should have been done by an hour ago. But, I distinctly, because I was part of the motion, I was reading off exactly what we were reversing, and I don't recall at all the hundred animal definition at all. So that's something that was added from the time we got out of that meeting until we got here. And I strongly recommend going to the five hundred, because that gives us, we know what five hundred cows is, and we know what five hundred chickens are, it's a, it's a big operation. Hundred animals, my wife could have ninety chickens in the back, if she, if she would like, if I'd let her, she'd probably let me out. But anyway, this, adding the definition seems to be implying that the Planning and Zoning Committee stamped this at the time, and I do not recall that at all. Thank you.
Supervisor Matcowski.
Mr. Chair, it goes back to, there was no motion at that night, at the October 26th Planning and Zoning Meeting, to change the definition on animal confinement facilities. So therefore, you have to revert back, you have to revert back to what was presented to the committee. So this is a copy right here of what was presented to the committee that evening, in the packet. And this one says, "animal confinement facilities, locations of confinement of livestock at a density exceeding three animal units per acre." Now, Director Bowers, or, not Director Bowers, excuse me, Assistant Zoning Administrator Bowers, said that, when he spoke, said that he changed that, not the committee, he changed that. Hold on. So, this animal units per acre is confusing, and Zoning Administrator Bowers said that he didn't want somebody that has an acre land and has four cattle on it to be illegal, exempted, which is understandable. So that's why they were going to use animal units. Barry made the amendment of that tonight, to make it an animal unit of five hundred, that takes care of the small guys on the acre of land with four cattle, they're okay. It takes care of our small family farms out there, just by looking at the maps, and not having roads and stuff on the maps. But Peter Malik was mentioned. Peter Malik's farm falls in one of the zones, and his farm is that same sixty cow dairy size. As I go further down the old Highway 10, there's a Hellmaniac Farm there, that if you've ever driven by it, beautiful little farm, that falls in a zone. They milk about sixty cows, have a nice slurry store system out back. So this takes care of all those problems. So I would ask that we take a vote on the amendment and move on with this. So, if we're using the three hundred animals per acre, you'd have to have a hundred and sixty-six acres to have five hundred?
With three animals.
For three animals per acre? Would use, would be the same thing? So is that three animals per acre follow-through for, for all of them? So, what I, I guess what I'm asking, so as if there's, if you're saying five hundred cows, you would need to have a hundred and sixty-six acres? Is that, is that correct?
If, if it's approved as was presented, there's an amendment to change it to five hundred animal units.
Right. Okay, so then I'm asking Barry. So...
Mr. Chair, again, I, I always, because this is confusing to people who are not involved, five hundred units does not mean five hundred cows.
But it could.
Five hundred, no, it can't, we go three fifty again, because a dairy cow, a full-grown dairy cow is one point, without having the figures, but...
A cow's not a cow?
A cow's not a, it's an animal, that's why, that's why they call them an animal unit.
Like a chicken is point three three.
I'm getting real close to Mr. Robbie, where I don't understand a lot of this either.
It's, it's all, Mr. Chair, to make it, you know, we, we need to vote on this. But what it does is, an animal excretes, excretes excrement...
Yes.
...based on its body size and density, so they use animal units in general to, and then there are a list of, of which...
Because of what it produces...
Correct.
...considers how many animals. Okay, so that, that helps a little bit. Director Schuler, had some comment?
First and foremost, I'd like to apologize to the board for having this issue derail the discussion of this. I think it's, as explained by Dan in our email to the county board chair, we made a suggestion that we thought might help improve the ordinance, and it's one hundred percent correct that it was not voted on by the committee, and at that point, likely, we should have understood that it really needs, that particular point, if it's going to be part of the ordinance, should be recommended out of committee. But it was made with the intention of helping to make a clarification and a benefit to the ordinance, and for all of the confusion and discussion tonight, I apologize. In no way, shape, or form does staff ever take a step to make policy, and it would not be something that we would want to do. So I apologize for our miscommunication with the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair. And it's my hope, and I see Mr. Juris on the screen, and I'm glad that the top of his head hasn't twisted all the way out yet, because he's very much been advocating all these many months for simple inclusion of the village of Amherst to the ordinance, and the same with the village of Junction City, to actually have the wells that they have protected by the newly drawn maps. And I realize that this is what has turned into a very complicated and substantial conversation, and likely isn't the type of lengthy conversation that should be resolved on the county board floor. Should the county board choose to just eliminate that, take it as it was originally intended, God bless you. And the committee can certainly, and the chair can certainly bring up a discussion of what can be a better definition for that particular part of the ordinance at a later date. But I would encourage you, if you can, find it within yourselves to move past this in a graceful way, whether Supervisor Jakowski's amendment is accepted and the issue settled tonight, or if not, that you please consider the whole body of the ordinance outside of that small part that has become, oh my god, a sticking point. So, with that, again, I'm sorry that this has taken the direction that it has, but I think the, the ordinance itself and the work that's gone into it is definitely worth a vote tonight. Thank you.
So those are some of my thoughts, is either we, we go forward and call this amendment and see how it does, or even remove definitions, or go back to the other definition, or try something else, but we will, we will produce something tonight out of this body for a wellhead protection. So, let's, 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 let's keep it short. Supervisors Astro, then Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you. I guess I'm not clear on Supervisor Jakowski, Barry, if you can...
The number.
Just elaborate a little bit on, you kept saying, you know, a farm could be eliminated. It could be, I suppose, but does insurance not come into play at that point, or?
No, Supervisor Astro, what it does, it would eliminate that individual, again, sixty cow dairy, under the hundred animal units. Barn burns down, he would not be allowed under, because he wouldn't be able to be compliant, and he would no longer be protected under grandfathering situations. He would, wouldn't be allowed to rebuild his farm.
The ordinance would not, the ordinance would not allow him.
If tornado...
Insurance would cover it, but it would not allow him to put it back.
Correct.
If, if that would have been stated early on, I wouldn't have asked the question.
I, I apologize for that, Supervisor Astro.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is good discussion, unfortunately, we have to do it here. I do want to thank the committee for making the concessions that they did make, to make this resolution a much better resolution and ordinance than the last time we were here. I think that having actual numbers based on some sound data, rather than just pulling out five hundred as an arbitrary number, would, would be wise. If that means that we just vote on this as presented tonight, and then have the Planning and Zoning Committee come back next month with that ordinance language changes, with data from our water resource specialists, from the Planning and Zoning Administrators, I see Director Hustler is here from UW Extension, and have those numbers presented with some data behind it, rather than just an arbitrary number. I appreciate Supervisor Jakowski's wanting to compromise, and I, I believe we all want to find a compromise, because none of us in this room want to put a small dairy farm out of business. We want all of those small farms to be thriving and not struggling if anything should ever happen. But I, I feel like in order to make a wise choice with numbers that are accurate, we should actually have some input from, from the specialists. We also cannot afford to leave Amherst and Junction City hanging. They've been waiting long enough, and this should not stop us tonight from, from make, taking a vote to pass, at a very minimum, to pass this resolution, sorry, ordinance as presented. So, I think we have a decision to make here tonight on how we want to do that, but one way or another, we have to take care of the city, the villages, and, and Amherst and Junction City, so, thank you.
Supervisor Pataki.
Mr. Chair, we have a amendment by Supervisor Jakowski, and a second. I would say we should take a vote and see where that ends up. We can talk about this all night, then.
We might. All right, if there's no further discussion, we have an amendment to add, to go from one hundred to five hundred. And the clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Chair, if I may, quickly.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
I would just like to remind the body that five hundred is not an arbitrary number. I've run the math, it's not an arbitrary number. Now we may take the vote, thank you.
And the clerk will call a roll.
Actually, Super, may I speak on that?
No.
Because we do have professionals in this room who can...
Wait, we're, I asked the clerk to call a roll.
Wait, we're, I asked the clerk to call a roll.
Okay. Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Yay.
Uh, Bob Gifford, sorry.
Supervisor Gifford.
Robbie.
Was that Robbie?
Rob.
Robbie.
Yeah.
Maresi?
No.
Barry Jakowski.
Yes.
Neville?
No.
Morrow?
Aye.
Zastro?
Aye.
Pataki?
Aye.
Madine?
Aye.
Honal?
Aye.
Reeser?
No.
Dubek?
Aye.
Hega?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Laddick?
Aye.
Rakowski?
Aye.
Jankowski?
Aye.
Gussel?
Aye.
Splinter?
Aye.
Soik?
Aye as well.
Dodge?
Aye.
So we have 19 in favor, three against, resolution or amendment adopted.
So any other amendments? Supervisor Reeser.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to bring another amendment to the floor.
Make sure you're using the mic, sir, so.
I believe I am.
I couldn't see it in your jacket, but I want to make sure everybody at home can hear you as well.
So I, I would like to start with, I absolutely agree, Amherst and Junction City have waited more than long enough for this. We, it's critically important that we pass this amendment tonight, but I would like to offer the following amendment. To replace the included maps drafted March 21st, 2021, with those maps previously vetted and provoked, proposed by Planning and Zoning staff drafted November 3rd, 2020. These 2020 maps were proposed by Planning and Zoning staff based on sound science and data. They were approved by the GACAC Committee. They were supported by the city of Stevens Point. They preserved the areas between the flow paths, which offer the safest option in the future for installation of future municipal wells. And they offer a 20-year travel time, which is already a significant compromise from the protection of the entire recharge zone. Maps drafted in 1993 and 2002 include the entire recharge zone and offered compelling foresight in doing so. What I'm asking here tonight is not to change any language, but to simply revert back to the maps that were proposed by Planning and Zoning, which include those interstitial areas between the, the flow maps as areas that are critically needed for future wells. Thank you.
So you're making that as an amendment?
I am.
So, so do I have a second? Most seconded by Supervisor Neville. Discussion. Supervisors Astro, then Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe, and I thought we had a, an agreement that the maps from November 3rd of 2020 would be the ones that were used. I believe that. I don't understand the change of maps at this point in time.
Director Schuler, please.
Just to clarify, the maps with the maps you received tonight were here in April. At that time, the ordinance was not passed, sent back to committee for discussion. When the discussion was taken up, the maps were the maps that you have tonight. When Supervisor Jakowski made his motion, he moved to make three changes to the ordinance and no changes to be made to the maps. So that was the, the motion that was made. So the line for the maps was these maps here in April, back to the committee, back again unchanged. So there, there was no action taken in, in the meantime to go back to the November maps.
Which maps came forward to this body pre, before that we sent it back to committee? Was it the ones from 2020 or?
These maps.
The ones that are before us tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Soik.
I don't know if this is a point of order or correction. But I do not believe that this was sent back to committee. I do not believe that there was a motion to send this back to committee. This failed in April. It never was sent back to committee. This body voted it down. They did not send it back to committee. The committee, i- if, if I remember correctly, didn't even have to bring this back because it failed. It was not voted on to go back to committee. Now I'd like some clarification on that because I'm getting older and I don't trust my memory like I used to.
Director Schuler.
Supervisor Soik is correct in the sense that it was not approved and the county board provided absolutely no direction when it took the vote. There was a lengthy discussion with various points made to explain reasons for voting against. The vote was taken. The ordinance was not passed. The county needs a wellhead protection ordinance. The, the committee chair brought it back for discussion. So in a sense, it was not referred back for additional work. It was voted down with absolutely no direction from the board. The committee took it up again to discuss, brought back what you have here before you because they understand, I guess, the importance of having the updates to the ordinance, especially in light of the village of Amherst never being included in the original ordinance and the village of Junction City not having any protection for their existing well.
So I'm getting older too and my memory wasn't serving me correct. I stand corrected. It was not. It was voted on and it failed. So. But the point I was trying to make was that there was a set of maps that were in it that failed at that time. Supervisors Astro, do you have your hands up?
I did. And, and that is correct. What Director Schuler just said and what Supervisor Soik said, I, I recollect that also, that it was shot down, was not sent back to committee. It went on for a few months. I went to the Planning and Zoning Committee and requested that it be brought back into discussion again. Took some time and it finally did come around to having a discussion again.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Reeser.
I would suggest to the board that these aren't mutually exclusive. This has seen an awful lot of debate over the last four or five years. What I'm simply suggesting here is we revert to a map which was suggested by Planning and Zoning and includes those areas between the flow maps, which is a geoscientist, is just a logical approach to looking at a recharge area. The current maps exclude that and exclude potential future well locations.
So for myself and the rest of us that weren't involved in the planning and zoning, we have two different sets of maps. What is the biggest difference between these two different sets of maps? What, what is on one and what isn't on the other? And I see Jen is going to stand up and tell us. Thank you.
Can I answer that question for you? In the November maps that Ray is referring to, you'll see that in the maps before you this evening, there are defined well recharge areas that contribute groundwater to each of those areas. The maps are specifically different for the urban area, which is the city of Stevens Point, the village of Plover and the village of Whiting. In the maps that are in the packet that was submitted to you this evening, parcels between those recharge areas are not protected. The maps that Ray is referring to in November, we had originally proposed protecting in between those recharge zones in that urban area for a number of different reasons, but the biggest one being those are most likely the areas where future wells for the villages of White, Plover and Whiting and the city of Stevens Point would ever need to be cited in case they need additional wells. By removing those, we take away the protection of those resources for, for future needs, should they be need to be used. So it's really parcels between the recharge areas in the urban area. There are no differences between the Junction City maps and the village of Amherst maps from November to what you see before you this evening.
So can you also, correct me if I'm wrong. The county sets the maps. If the city villages need or feel they need more protection, they have the authority to do that within their own wellhead protection?
Within, they have jurisdiction for sure within their municipal boundaries. These areas that we're talking about fall outside of their municipal boundaries. So they would fall under our jurisdiction and our ordinance. Ideally, we would have them match up so there would be no confusion between the municipal ordinance and our ordinance. If the county chooses to not protect those areas, the city has expressed that they will continue to try and protect those areas using their ordinance. Whether that would hold up, hold up in a court of law is uncertain. But they have expressed that they will attempt to do that.
So the maps that Supervisor Reeser is referring to gives those municipalities that protection?
Yes. Yep. It, it protects as additional areas that fall outside of their jurisdiction, their municipal boundaries.
Thank you. Supervisor Larry Rakowski.
Jen, why, why don't you just stay up there for a minute? Can you tell me of any other municipal wellheads that are as large as the one that's proposed this evening?
There is one other, what county wellhead that protects out to the 20-year time of travel, which is what was being proposed this evening is protecting out to the 20-year time of travel. Our prior ordinance that extended to the full recharge area? No, there is no other county wellhead protection ordinance that protects out that far.
Where do most of them stop?
Most of, there are not that many county wellheads. Between 10 and 20 is pretty typical for.
10 or 20, 10 or 20 years?
10 and 20 year time of travel. Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Dodge, then Supervisor Reeser.
So I remember when this came to us, I voted not to approve it, thinking that it would go back and I wanted more discussion about, I think what Supervisor Reeser is talking about, there was an area like a circle that included areas between these current 20-year of travel indications. When you talk about you're protecting potential well development for the city, at the same time, you are restricting activities of the property owners in that area. And so I'm going to vote for adopting this as proposed. And then perhaps if the city decides to locate a well, they can then come back and negotiate for a better time of travel in the, the headwaters, whatever.
Supervisor Reeser.
I'll retract my comment at this time.
Supervisor Soik.
So again, thinking back to April, Supervisor Morrow, who sits on the committee, had said the people that live outside the city limits use their land very differently than the people that live inside the city limits. I applaud her on her work that she has done on the committee. And I applaud her for realizing and understanding that the people outside the city limits do utilize their land differently. And it was a big talking point and a big concern back in April that we don't, we put as few restrictions on private landowners as we possibly can. Thank you.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would also like to thank Supervisor Dodge for her comments. One of the things we did, we used a scientific approach when we used, drew these maps or approved the maps that are presented with you tonight. What was in was in, if you, if your property, maybe even just a small portion of that property was included in the recharge area in those flow maps, that parcel became part of these, the maps that are included. If it was out, it was not included. And Supervisor Dodge is, is correct. If a new well was proposed, this isn't like any other of our ordinance, it is a living document and could be changed as, as a new well was proposed. We as the committee felt that if your land was not within those flow patterns of an existing well, that you should not be held to standards that, that really shouldn't be proposed. And again, I remind supervisors, especially the supervisors who live outside, who aren't in a city district. We protect the cities of Stevens Point's wellheads. And we tell them, we are not going to allow you to have a filling station or a gas station within that recharge area. And the minute the city annexes a piece of that property, what do they do? They build, they allow gas stations to be built in them. So I, I would hope that the, the maps would, would pass this evening as proposed. The, the committee has done a lot of hard work. We've had a lot of conversations with our constituents. We've heard from a lot of people on it. I would encourage everybody to vote with me and vote the maps as proposed. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to the body.
Supervisor Madine, then Supervisor Neville.
I also voted against the resolution that came up this spring. And now I have, I see that this series of maps that have been presented to us, we never had any look at any of the ones that were, that, that the, the staff had originally thought were the very best, but they never came to any, anybody, any of us at all. So we've had just this to look at. As a former zoning administrator for this county, it's very clear that we need to, to, to to deal with issues that are acceptable. And if we, if, if we exceed the the resolution that is before us tonight, we never, we probably never get one. Because if, if we're looking to avoid the science and, and use the science, which, which is very clear on these maps, it makes sense. There is a recharge area for the existing wells. If we start, start to, to look at the entire recharge area, it's, there's no science behind it. It's just simply a much broader groundwater flow. So I think it's, the chairman, I have to commend the chairman who has, even though he's a farmer and expected to, to look out for the farmers. I think he has done a super job of trying to shepherd this through in a format that we can all agree to, that would still be higher than any other county's extensive regulations in, in the entire state of Wisconsin. I think we ought to approve this tonight and I have changed my, my, my vote to strongly support the resolution as presented.
Supervisor Neville, did you, were you next?
Yes. When this came up before, there was discussion about the recharge areas and what was going to be included and not included and I went to that last Planning and Zoning meeting to hear what the discussion was on those questions and concerns. And I didn't hear any discussion on the questions and concerns. These earlier maps from November 3rd, 2020 have been reviewed and approved as good coverage to give our county safe water. If there's one thing we're losing all the time, it's water. And it makes sense to me to go with the November 3rd, 2020 maps that give better protection than these last maps.
Who was next? Supervisor Morrow?
Yeah, I'm just wondering that we're talking about voting on maps that, does anybody have them in front of them?
Oh.
So we're kind of just, we're asking people to vote on something from maps that have not been provided ahead of time. Like we don't even have a way to look at it. And I realized it was really just like the difference between like a glove in a mitten. It just rounded it off. So it's not a big change. But for anybody that's in between the fingers of the glove, maybe they would have an objection. maybe they would have an objection. I just don't see how you can vote on an amendment when no information has been provided.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would question Supervisor Neville. She is referring to maps that were voted on and approved. I'm wondering who approved maps because I don't remember the Planning and Zoning Committee approving any maps that she's referring to. Maybe you could clarify, Mildred?
Well, I was referring to the November 3rd, 2020 maps that Supervisor Reeser listed, um, GCAK and others that had approved those recommendations. And maybe he can answer that better.
That's correct. GCAK approved those maps. Uh, to my knowledge, GCAK has not approved the maps in front of us. Uh, Supervisor Morrow is absolutely right. I didn't want to hang this vote up for Amherster Junction City on looking at maps this evening. But if we need to do that, we need to do that. She's absolutely right to characterize it as the difference between a glove and a mitten. But what we're doing is we're missing pretty important parts in the protection zone. If you're going to start carving up the protection zone, it's no longer a protection zone. So wellhead protection zone is just that. It's not a fragmented glove. Thank you.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
I would disagree with Supervisor Reeser. We use the science before us. All the properties that were in the flow patterns in the recharge area were used. Any that were not, were not included. So we did use good, sound science to pick that recharge area.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski, then Supervisor Splinter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maps first adopted February 20, or February 2nd, 1993. February 2nd, 1993, we didn't have the science that we have today. They did the best they could with what they had at the time. Our flow models weren't there. We weren't able to tell recharge time as accurately as we are today. As the science gets better, these maps will shrink. 20 years from now, when they look at this, they may decide the recharge area is less than it is now. Because the science gets better, we get better at modeling. We get better equipment, technology changes, it's technology driven. When these maps were made in 1993, the computer they were made out of, you know, was huge. Our smartphone we hold now today will do probably 10 times what the computer these maps were originally drawn with did. Or maybe they were even drawn by hand. So as technology changes, our science gets better. So that's why we have to look at the science, follow the science. What's in is in, what's out is out.
Supervisor Splinter.
I agree, the maps we have tonight are, are the glove. I recall the, uh, Public Works Director, if I, again, goes back a ways, but he was, he took the podium in, in favor of closing in the gaps so that they would have added protection without even having a well proposed area. And we got to remember that our mission here is not, is to provide good, sound, scientific regulations for our community as, as a whole. To go to the mitten idea where you're closing in all the gaps so the politics of the city are happy. Uh, it puts several people in my, in my district into a zone which they don't need to be. And, and, and it's over, overregulation in my, in my idea. So I think what we have tonight is well thought out. We've been doing this for two and a half years. Uh, we got rid of a lot of objections, I think. And, uh, it's time to get Junction City and Amherst into the plan and move forward. Thank you.
Supervisor Reeser.
As a PhD geoscientist, I have to respectfully disagree with some of, uh, my colleagues sitting on the county board. I would say that, um, I think we should always rely on staff. It's puzzling to me that we're relying on the best science and we're ignoring these areas. Um, I don't think we have time, nor should we be spending an entire meeting trying to sort out the hydrology of Portage County or specifically these areas. Um, I can, you know, my experience is that we should be protecting these areas in between the flow paths. The flow paths are mapped based on wells. If there isn't a map in that interstitial area, we simply have no data. Absence of evidence is an evidence of absence. All right? That's a sound, scientific principle. So I would just say, uh, the amendment is before you. It protects those areas that are currently unprotected in the maps that we have before us tonight. Thank you.
So I would, I would think that if we had them all area, the recharge area, the whole county as part of our recharge area, then we would be well protected. I think some of this is with Portage County is that we paint with a big brush. And when we put some of these boundaries down for this wellhead protection and the recharge area, and I had asked Jen this earlier, if the cities, the villages have authority within their jurisdiction to go above and beyond what we put out, and the answer was yes. If that were the case and they were looking for more protection, then they would come back to us to have something added to the map. I was talking to someone from the city today and I mentioned that we had this on the agenda tonight. And they said, we have no problems with what is being proposed on the maps as it currently states. And also, I see no one here from the village, I see no one here from the city, uh, opposing the maps uh, or opposing any part of it. So I think that they have options and they have, uh, the ability to be able to fill in the gaps in the glove, uh, within their toolbox. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to reiterate part of what Supervisor Rakowski and the Chair of our Planning and Zoning Committee was getting at. We have here in Portage County, as presented in front of us, the most comprehensive wellhead protection ordinance within the state of Wisconsin. As we as a committee researched this, we could find no other municipality that had a, uh, wellhead protection ordinance outside of their village and/or city and/or, uh, excuse me, yes, city and/or municipal boundaries for wellhead protection. So we here in Portage County have the most comprehensive wellhead protection ordinance as proposed here this evening throughout the state of Wisconsin.
Oh, I've got it here. So, uh, Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I applaud the committee for having a, uh, the most progressive wellhead protection in the state of Wisconsin. I think that's great. I think the only thing that Mr. Reeser is asking for is that we fill in those gaps because not only does filling in the gaps protect the city, the Village of Whiting and the Village of Plover, but it also protects the wells in those areas as well. Uh, we're not asking for any undue duress on the, the people who live in those areas. What we are asking is that we don't have any kind of activities in those areas that will affect well over 40% of the population of Portage County. We need to keep the water clean for the, for everybody in Portage County. And when you're talking about affecting the quality for the cities and the city and the villages, that's a huge population that relies on, you know, just, uh, a handshake deal, basically, that nobody will, um, put in some kind of service or prohibited use or, or use that maybe not best practice use uh, in those areas that could affect the groundwater for well over 40% of the people in the county. I think filling in these gap areas, uh, with protection is, is wise. It's proactive. And if we don't do it, uh, the city could take extraterritorial uh, privilege and, and take those areas and protect them themselves, which is not really playing nice. And I think the county, the city, the villages all need to be playing nice, especially when it comes to groundwater issues here in central Wisconsin, where we have considerable amount of pollution and groundwater issue in, in our county. So we need to be working together, not just doing what we do because, because we can. So, thank you.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski, then Supervisor Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the body. I do would like to remind members of the body that we are taking people's personal property rights away as we put more restrictions on them. So unless you own the property that you're talking about restricting, be careful about what you do.
Supervisor Morrow.
Wouldn't we have to publicly notice the map change? So anyone who was against the change could have a public notice of the change? I just don't see how we do an amendment to maps people don't have and we're changing it, what went out in the packet as the public notice. Now we're saying, oh, by the way, you're in a district, you know, surprise.
And you didn't have a chance to speak in a public forum. Supervisor Reeser.
Uh, I agree with Supervisor Morrow, uh, but I would say that the 2020 maps were approved by the Citizens Groundwater Committee, and so they have been seen by the public. Should they be seen again? Absolutely. And is that different than coming before a formal county committee? Absolutely. But I would not suggest that the maps have not been seen by the public.
That, and I think what Supervisor Morrow was getting to was our, I, Dave, is it our, our Roberts Rules of Order, our, our public notice that we are required by law to make, uh, in advance to the public to let them know what it is that we are voting on and what it is that we have, uh, before us. And I, I believe that is what Supervisor Morrow is talking about. Correct? Yes. Uh, folks, we're not going to sit here and beat this up all night long. We've, we've got one more issue after this, and I think you folks are going to have a lot to talk about on that one as well. So unless anybody has anything that they really feel is pressing, I will, I will offer, let them have the opportunity to speak. Otherwise, we have an amendment. Supervisors Astro, make it short, please.
I, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I have to, I have to beg to differ with you. You, you let other amendments in that we didn't open up to the public, uh, then to vote on. I don't understand why this one, uh, wouldn't need to have public notice. And maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't understand.
Right. Yeah, and, and I, uh, and part of it is, and I, I guess unless we're talking specifics, but other amendments, we're talking about language. Here we're talking about, uh, a map that would affect a, a district and affect the landowner. And most of that stuff, when we have that, we have public hearings on those things. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, may I call for the vote and see if the amendment fails?
I'm, I'm ready. Supervisor Hano, please. Joan hasn't had an opportunity, and then we will call a vote.
And it's very, very, it's very brief, Chair Haga. I think that we need to be looking 10, 15 years down the road and protect the water. As long as it, look how long this whole process has taken so far. Um, people want to go back to drawing board again in another year or two. I think we need that mitten approach to protect the water when we're not here anymore.
All right, we have a motion to, uh, bring that, bring, and I, I'm not even sure if we can, but.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a clarification on it? That voting no is to approve the maps that were in the packet? Voting yes is to approve the newly, the amendment, correct?
The, the amendment is to.
It's been a long time since we've been there.
Right. The amendment, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Supervisor Reeser, is to bring in the maps uh, that were drafted in 1993 and 2002.
No.
No.
Ask him. He made it.
Uh, Kayla has it before her, but the amendment.
I'm reading the email.
The amendment is to reinstate the maps which were proposed by Planning and Zoning in November 3rd of 2020, rather than the maps that are in front of you, which were proposed by Planning and Zoning in March of 2021.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yep. Just to clarify, then, yes will be to approve.
Yes will be to approve Supervisor.
Change, no will be not to change.
Right. To go with the ones that were in the packet. And the clerk will call a roll.
Lattick?
No.
Dubek?
No.
Gussel?
Gussel?
No.
Martenson?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Hano?
Yes.
Madine?
No.
Soik?
No.
Rakowski?
No.
Haga?
No.
Zastro?
Yes.
Morrow?
No.
Neville?
Yes.
Pataki?
No.
Gifford?
Yes.
Dodge?
No.
Splinter?
No.
Matt Jakowski?
No.
Barry Jakowski?
No.
Robbie?
Aye.
Maresi?
Aye.
And Jankowski?
Yo.
So we have eight in favor, 14 against. Uh, amendment failed.
So back to the original, uh, resolution, uh, as amended.
Did you have a, did you have a motion on that at all?
Yes, that's what started it.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. Joan, that was a little delayed. Are you in favor of the?
No, I am not. It's a nay.
It's a nay. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a nay also.
Neville is a nay.
Yes. Motion carries.
May I be, may I be excused?
Yes. We have, uh, number 10. And this is the amended agenda item. Amendment of Portage County Code of Ordinance Section 3.1.47 entitling per diem, mileage payment and attendance. This is what we had talked about before, uh, that if we don't get something done, uh, come the end of the year, uh, we would revert back to, uh, what we had before. There would be no compensation for, uh, video or telephonic attendance at a meeting, so.
Resolution number 175 2020, 2022, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution amends Section 3.147 of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion by Pataki, seconded by Dodge. Discussion. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, um, you know, I'm on the CAP Services Board, and that's, um, an assignment that comes out of our Health and Human Service Committee. But I have no control over whether they decide to go, uh, you know, full virtual, who knows how long? I mean, that's, so I, I would still go to the meetings, I mean, virtually, but, uh, would not be getting per diem. Is that correct?
I think it's, uh, foresee an appointee of a committee or an organization other than a Portage County, which would be the CAP Services, uh, including those jointly formed with Portage County, shall be eligible for pay, payment of per diem of, for video conference or telephonic attendance if such attendance is allowed by the rules of the Perspective Committee. So like, uh, South Central Library, they always meet virtual even before this, I think, for the most part. It is still acceptable. It is still something that's covered in here. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, I just would assume that this is a fluid document as well and a living document. And if it doesn't work for us, we can change it in the future, correct?
Yes, and I, uh, the folks in the executive ops and the rest of us that, uh, we had quite a lengthy discussion on things and, uh, we took this and turned it upside down and we went through these items one at a time, depending on how much objection was here. But a lot of this is because we're plowing new field here and we have only been in this pandemic for a year or two, and this is all new technology. And a lot of this is we're trying to figure out how to navigate it and what that looks like in the future. And anytime there's a new body here before us too, they can change and do whatever they would like as well. So I just want to remind everybody of that. Uh, we're trying to set down some guidelines, some parameters, so that we have some base to follow, at least, uh, as far as a template. I fully anticipate that down the road, things will change and, uh, certain items will come to the head and we will have discussion, lengthy discussions about those as well, so. Is there any other discussion or questions, comments, or concerns? Is there any other discussion or questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that in the language that's before you on your desk and that was sent out on Friday, the underlined sections in red are recommended amendments from myself and Corporation Counsel. After the meeting on Friday, we went through all of the amendments and changed, you know, updated the language based on what the committee had voted on. There were some clarifying points that we added in there, as I said, underlined. So if those are acceptable, I would recommend making an amendment to include those in the language because those were not approved at the committee.
So the items that are underlined, you would like an amendment to approve those as well? Or the whole document's going to get approved? If the whole document gets approved, I don't know if that much makes any difference. Dave?
Well, so the footnote on the bottom of the ordinance language just states that the underlined sections are recommended amendments from us. So, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong. They wouldn't be included in the ordinance language if there isn't an amendment done tonight on the floor?
That would be the cleanest way to handle it, yes. And we're only talking about, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven words in paragraph sub-small a, number two, the one that talks about the infrequent loss of video and audio connection. So those underlined words in that paragraph two are the ones that the county clerk and I, after we were charged by the committee with creating this lined-out version of the proposed ordinance, after the committee's, I think it was about a two-hour meeting, if I recall, the clerk and I thought that those underlined words there should be added, that's why, but we did it as a footnote. We said, look, this is just our recommendation. This is not what the committee decided. Supervisor Reiser, did you have a comment?
No, I would move to amend as staff suggested.
I had a motion by Supervisor Reiser, seconded by Supervisors Astro to add those lines that are in red that are underlined. All those in favor with the amendment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original resolution as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. This is a good start. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Lattick, seconded by Gussel. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.